All right, we're live. We're gonna call this special session of the city, special session to order December 4th, 6:30 PM. Uh, we'll start with invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we come before you today seeking your guidance in the work we have before us. Grant us the strength, patience, courage for what's right. Protect our city, home, and our families. Bless those who serve and sacrifice for the safety of this community. Bless this meeting. We ask you to sing in Jesus' name.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving on. Number four is announcements. Are there any announcements that we need to go over?
One more time, we should talk about the parade of lights.
And the vendor.
And the vendors. I'm not aware of the vendors, but I don't have it right in front of me, so December 13th is the parade. Meet at the park at 5:00 PM.
At the point.
At the point on the park. At 5:00 PM.
At 30.
Five lineup, lineup at five, leaving at six.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna start at that.
Okay.
And then the vendors.
The vendors, starting at vendors can start at 11, start selling, well, set up at 11, start selling at noon, and they can go all the way to the end.
I know that the flyers and Facebook and everything else has been put out this week with the route. Um, start pushing it, so.
And we need more vendors.
Vendors, participants in the parade. There's what?
No fee.
No fee for vendors, okay? Any other announcements? All right, we're gonna move on. Number five is citizens' input related to agenda items.
We have one non-agenda item that Cecilia wants to bring up, but let's let her move to the front.
So you wanna make a motion to?
Make a motion, we let the not, the non-related agenda item, bring 10 up to five, so that she doesn't have to take the entirety of it.
Okay, so we'll take in citizens' input for related and non-related agenda items. I only have the one for Cecilia, so.
We have a motion.
We made a motion, so we give a second.
Oh, sorry about that, guys. Got a motion? Second. Got a second, all in favor of Judge Goby? All right, sorry about that. Cecilia, it's yours.
Okay, thanks. Um, since I have gotten involved going to the meetings and stuff and getting to know things that are going on in the community, I keep thinking, there's gotta be some other way we can communicate with people so more people get involved. And so I'm just kinda stirring a pot. I think we need to start brainstorming. I mean, and on, you know, people in my neighborhood say they miss the newspaper that used to go on, 'cause then they kinda knew what was going on and events that were coming up and such. And so I thought, well, most people are online now. I don't know if there's any way to do like the online news that would kinda communicate, you know, whatever's going on with the fire department, or whatever's going on with upcoming events, or, you know, just uplifting people, or whatever goes on in newspapers, you know, I mean, that sort of thing. Just like maybe a monthly, or I don't know. Anyway, I just kinda wanted to put some stuff out there, 'cause it seems like, from what I've seen, it's the same people that um, get involved all the time. They're the same people that volunteer and everything. And if there was some other way that people out here have more talents than probably don't know how to get involved, or need, know that they need to get involved, I don't know. I was just kinda throwing that out there to see, you know, if they, anybody else had some other ideas.
All right, you know, we can't really respond. I would just ask counsel to make sure somebody's thinking about that, possibly for future agenda items, workshop, something. Any other citizens' input? All right, if not, we'll move on to new business. A, under new business is discussion, interaction on resuming recruitment for the position of city administrator. Counsel, that's back on y'all. What are y'all thinking? What's, what's your plan?
I'd like to get the ad back out, get it, get it, get it posted again. And I, I'd like to, if there's ways that we could speed that process. And that may be interviewing them in instead of, instead of group interviews, uh, you know, if we, if we see a candidate that we know is a fit, then immediately get the rest of us together, whatever we need to do, get the rest of us together for group interviews. And, uh, and then, in other words, I don't think we wanna wait till we get 21 applications and narrow that down, and narrow that down, narrow that down. Try to get through it quicker, so we don't get, get somebody snatched, snatched away from us. Yeah, I think the, uh, through the last process, we, we kinda built a list of requirements that we, that we want to have the applicants meet, and it's, it would be much quicker if we can find, um, those applicants that meet those requirements, and then immediately do the, do the, do the interviews, and not, like Ramsey said, drag it out to where we have maybe four or five. We may not get that many, we may get more, but let's repost it and then, um, uh, act on them as quickly as possible. I think the last round, or the last process took too long, and I think maybe we, we had some candidates that we didn't get, uh, to talk to finally, because we didn't get to, um, uh, we didn't act quick enough.
The same people on do the interviews and then.
Are we taking anybody that's applied for? I would re, I would recommend we just have them completely resubmitted. So I would ask that your, your motion is made to be able to carry all that out, that says within a certain amount of time, once the application comes in, that it has gotten out to whoever we want to do the initial interviews, so that we can do that. Just make sure it's in the motion, so that we can do that the right way. 'Cause if not, then you gotta come back to the court counsel to set up a plan, so if you set it up now.
So what do we think? Interview within three, four business days when we get to, get the application?
I think that would be great.
So Ramsey, why don't we, um, uh, why don't we say within seven days of?
Calendar?
Seven, seven calendar days of an application being, um, received and reviewed by, 'cause individually, we will get the, get the, uh, applications, right? So like, we should see them the day they come in, right? So we should, we should get them, get notified of them. It's our job to then review it, and then let's have seven days before we do our initial interview from there, right? We're gonna run into Christmas and New Year and all that kinda stuff over the next couple of weeks, but if we can get it, that might be also in our favor, because people could have time off, and they might be able to do it during the day. Right? And are we gonna, are you and I gonna do the initial?
If that's how you set it up, I think it worked great last time, but that's, that's a council decision.
Okay. Does anybody else wanna do the initial? I'm good with the way it went.
Wanna use the same initial questions?
Background check to, right?
Background check won't come until after.
Yeah, let's get them pa, let's get them past that first interview before we spend any time on background and reference. And if we, if we find a candidate that we believe is ready to advance, then we call it a special meeting? That's what I would do. To do a final interview with that, with those candidates. We're making positive that we're gonna get more.
Just keep in mind of agenda requirements, so for all special meetings, it's gotta be three business days, which will give time anyway to set it up.
Right, so why don't we give ourselves seven days from determining we have a, um, uh, a potential, a second round interview? I mean, just because we give ourselves seven days doesn't mean we have to use all seven days. Right? Okay? I know you're trying to write that out in your head, aren't you?
I'm trying to write it out.
I'm trying to write that down on paper.
Qualifications that, that, uh, we come up with, are they gonna be added to the actual application itself online? Qualifications are there unless y'all are choosing to amend that.
John's description is already on the, is on the ad itself.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, with the, with the application, the qualifications on the application. I think what we wanna see, at least for me, I, what I wanna see is, um, a, a, a larger, a larger amount of experience in a city administrator role. It's probably the easiest way to say it.
And are we interviewing every single one that comes in, or?
No, I think we can determine, you know, from, uh, similar to how we did the last time, we, you know, we, we narrowed it down to a certain number of them, and said, these are the ones that we wanna pursue, and then.
But what we're looking at here is pretty much, you know, when it comes in and setting up the interview, so are there?
We get one, we look at that one right then and decide, do we wanna continue?
Exactly, yeah, but that's my point. If we decide, no, this person doesn't have the, doesn't have what we're looking for, then we can, we don't, we don't have to interview him and move forward with that one, right?
How are you guys wanting to determine that?
Individually, without being?
Individually.
Yeah, okay.
That's why, that's why the name is, I mean, unless we're scheduling meetings out, already out, on figuring out who's what, that's where the process, the lengthy process ends up happening, 'cause we have to have enough time to get all together, because where one person may see they fit, the other person may not, unless we're going with several email chains, with two and two, and constant, I mean, it's gonna get messy and it's gonna get time consuming.
You're either interviewing everybody, or?
Absolutely.
You're, you're setting it up in small buckets again, or you're setting a criteria that this is what we're gonna interview for.
So what if we do it in a small bucket?
I would say, make a criteria saying that somebody's got to have administrator experience, right? And then we allow, or we nominate two council members to make a determination, to ma, do the interview. We don't have, all of us, one, don't have to be together. We, we don't have to have a meeting, you know, we'll just say, two of you make the decision, go ahead and do the interview.
And it doesn't have to be the same two council members either, right? It could be where if, if both coun, if the two council members were not available for the second or third person, then you could use a different coun, you could have a substitute in the council.
Correct.
It, it just has to be two council members that interview, doesn't have to be the same two for all of them.
We could do that. What if we, what if we did? Wouldn't be too much trouble if we did pick a weeknight, once a week, we just convene and look at what we've got.
Be fine.
That means you still have to post it and everything, you know?
It's gonna be posted.
Well, we could, we could post a possible, a possible meeting.
Do you post a meeting in the council?
Yeah, I would prefer to keep it clean, is to post a meeting, um, to where it's open, y'all can either.
And yeah, we can cancel it if we don't have anybody to interview or do whatever.
We could call it a workshop. Uh, now you wanna, you wanna have it as a special session, so you can take some actions. Uh, and that way, even if you do want to do any interviews, and then y'all have, we've got three days in advance, when we make that agenda, we can put those interviews in there. That way, you have room to take action without having to drag it out.
Correct.
So if we go ahead and look at a calendar and say, we wanna have a special session on such and such dates, as long as y'all have an idea of what y'all want, and we can obviously leave it like a standing meeting, but if you don't wanna add things to it, we just have to have that time in, in advance. I think that's gonna be the cleanest way for everybody to get together, and you all have a chance to discuss and figure out who fits for what.
So do we do it on every Thursday or something, just standing meeting?
That's what we wanna set up, set it up for every Thursday, Tuesday.
Tuesday, whatever, and.
We already have one next, we already have a city council, it'll be the next Tuesday. Uh, the next Tuesday is the 16th.
So we already have a meeting scheduled that day, so we could put an update on it. We had an update on the 9th, which is already on the agenda for the 9th. The 16th, I could, but that one's gonna be a pretty, we got public hearings on that date, on the 16th, for our zoning.
It shouldn't take long. I got six, these applications, everybody already have it, so just be prepared to.
Uh, let's see, in the full calendar. So we've already got the 9th and 16th with dates on it. Y'all wanna do the 23rd?
Do it.
December?
Yep.
Hold on, hold on.
I mean, it's Christmas week. That's, that's week, that's what I'm saying, that's week of Christmas. Um, and then I won't be here on the 30th.
I'll leave on the 23rd, so we had to make that on the 22nd if we did that way. But we might skip Christmas week.
22nd, 39th.
What we wanna do with what we're trying to do is skip Christmas week.
And okay, so the 29th and 30th, I won't be here, so you'll, I mean, I'd be here on the 30th though, so you can do one the 30th, it's just me and I do it. She'd have to be here to take it.
Why don't we schedule it if we have a forum?
That's what we're talking about. We schedule it and then we.
Yeah, I can get them on the calendar, and I just want those agendas ready for case needed, add interviews or whatnot on those.
Why don't we just have the agenda be interviews?
And you'll have to post that agenda by the 23rd.
Yeah, so that way.
Because lots, lots rest that week.
If the only thing on the agenda is an interview, then shouldn't we?
We can just do updated interviews, I mean, that's fine. Um, so then, so the week of Christmas, we'll skip that one. What about the week of New Years, if you do the 30th? If y'all wanna, y'all wanna do the 30th, or y'all wanna?
Now, if we're gonna skip Christmas week, we need to do the 30th.
All right, so we're doing?
My opinion.
Yeah, if we have, if we have, um.
The 9th, the 16th, already done, um, the, the 30th of that. Now, how far do y'all wanna go?
I'd go out, one more week, and that's giving us a month, we oughta.
We can always add more later on.
Uh, that call on EDC or anything. No, it doesn't call on EDC, and so if we do the 30th, ideally, I, I wasn't gonna be here on the 6th, not here, but I had evening plans on the 6th. But we gotta do the 6th.
I'll be here though, so I can do that.
Uh, the 13th, we already have a meeting.
I, I would just go.
What about January the 8th?
I can do the 8th, but.
The 8th is a Thursday night?
Can you do Thursday night? You said no. Okay, so.
The reason I say is, 'cause if we, if we, if we don't meet the next three times or four weeks, we, we won't get this scheduled in time, but if we put it on there, if we put it on for the 8th now.
I'm gonna post the agendas, if, if y'all are confident that there will be nothing changing, I'm not gonna have anything to do anymore. Okay, good. Uh, I'll just put it as a discussion, interviews, and then more discussion in case y'all wanna take action afterwards. Um, okay, so then the 8th, and then we already have our meeting scheduled for regular session on the 13th. If y'all want it to be those eight.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you got that in your brain?
On the 8th, we can always add one to the 15th.
If maybe.
If we need to, or the 22nd. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna schedule for 16th, 23rd, 30th, and 8th? Not the 23rd, not the 20th.
So 16th, 30th, 8th, and then the 13th already scheduled. It's already on the one for the 9th. Yeah, I have an update on the one, so I don't have interviews scheduled for that, but I do have an update.
Which is good enough. Okay. Wait, can you make a motion on that? If it's just an update?
It's discussion.
Discussion.
You can take an action on it.
All right, so just had to make a motion to carry all that through.
Start everything working down, you know?
All right. Make a motion. Did we set up a schedule, um, of special meetings? Start, start, start. That we post the opening. We collect applications per week, and we review those in special meetings to determine whether the candidate moves to the next stage. And those meetings, the initial set of meetings will be December 16th, December 30th, January 8th, and January 13th. And those that, um, those that make it through that first selection process will be interviewed by the mayor and myself in no more than seven calendar days from that selection process. And if we determine that that candidate fits what we want, um, then we will, then we will call a special meeting for the full council to sit down and do a group interview. And that, that too needs to happen in no more than seven business days from the, from the date that the mayor and I decide that this candidate is going to advance.
I, pardon that.
Do I have a time?
What? No, I was gonna say, you not necessarily have to worry about the seven days, we already got those meetings scheduled, um, because you're gonna run into that time of Christmas, where we won't hit that seven days. That's kind of a small tweak of it. And what time do we want the special?
Well, we don't have to. That's kinda repetitive, because we've already have.
You can say excluding the week of Christmas.
Yeah, that's, that's wrong, that's what I was just trying to say.
Excluding the week of Christmas and set a time for it.
Um, okay, so we are excluding the week of Christmas and do those at 6:30 in the evening?
For certain regular council meetings, and they would be during that council meeting.
Yeah. Regular council meetings, and then will be done in the regular council meeting.
Did I cover it off?
Yeah.
You got everything?
I got the motion, I need a second.
I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor? Judge Goby?
Ramsey, maybe.
Greg Sprinkle.
David Sebber.
Keep the process going. All right, moving on, under new business to be, discussion, interaction, um, for, for, I should put that up there. Presentation regarding employee health benefits. So we had a presentation scheduled.
Yes, I spoke with her this morning. She said she wants to push it a little bit, so she can get us more accurate numbers, so we can actually compare apples to apples. That she was gonna call Chad, Chad, did she get a little bit today? Okay.
So are we looking at tabling?
Who's that ready?
It was Lauren.
As a company in Rockwell.
She is, she was going to present another option for benefits for staff, possibly looking at maybe a lesser expensive with the same coverage. We did talk that she wants to make sure we either get equal or better coverage, and, and she doesn't want us to have to go backwards, even though there's a cost to it. But she wants to compare apples to apples. She's got all the numbers that she was this morning, or this, this middle morning, and then she will come back. Um, I mentioned to her on the 16th, she said that works for her, and she'll come here and talk with us.
So just so the, the citizens are aware of what's going on there, we're just trying to find better insurance at a more affordable rate for our cit, our employees. So with the fact that that's going on, I guess we need a motion to table this until?
Let me ask you a couple of questions before we put it. See, do we know when, uh, what kind of notice we have to give TML to leave their?
That's gonna be, I, I was, I was talking with her this morning, that's gonna be something I'm gonna talk with our benefits coordinator to verify. She was kind of concerned after I was talking to her. She thought our open enrollment was a little bit later. Uh, but we just went through open enrollment, so that's gonna be part of our process, as we start looking at costs, as what our notice has to be, uh, and what enrollment date we would look at starting, 'cause I don't want there to be laps or anything.
Well, let me throw, let me throw out an alternative here. Because I talked, I talked to a couple of folks, just asked them questions, uh, last week. Um, and I was told that, you know, depending on when our open enrollment is, if, if we miss it, then we're really kinda, we can't, we can't back out of the pool, the TML pool, until we've given proper notice and that kinda thing. And it may, it may put us in a, in a position where, um, where we can't enter a normal group.
Right.
Um, and this guy had what I thought was a, a, an interesting thought. And that is, there is a, he didn't tell me who it was, but there is a payroll company that if you do the payroll through them, they can get, they can get you moved into their group, and you, and it somehow works around the deadlines for the open enrollment. And so, depending on what we find out here, then we may wanna explore that.
I mean, I'm, I'm up for any option that's gonna be a better cost advantage to us and staff, the city and staff itself. Um, I am concerned that, because we just hit open enrollment November 1st. This may be a longer process than we expected, but exploring all options is.
Yeah, but I think, I think it'd be a really good idea for us to look at two or three different scenarios that would allow us to, to look at, um, some different ways to improve both the health insurance costs for the employees, as well as reduce the redundant workload on our city staff. So if we have that opportunity, I would like to have multiple options presented to us to be able to say, here's what's the best thing for us to do as a city. Um, because we absolutely wanna do what's best for our employees. Um, and that, I think that either this whole hiring process we're going through, is kinda where this came to life for me. And so, um, we need to find a way to do better by you guys. And our job, that's our job, not just for the citizens, but for our employees who, you know, protect and serve versus. So the idea is, let's get as many options as we can, and have as many different, if, if I need, if we need to sit through five different presentations from folks who have multiple choice for us, then I'm certainly willing to sit here and, and listen to them and put it in the paper and say, you know, but I think we need to have the employees input as well, 'cause it's going to affect them. I hope we find a way for it to affect you guys very positively. You know, if we reduce your healthcare by 500 bucks a month, that's a $500 rate. It, you know, it doesn't cost the city any additional dollars. And that, and that's huge for, for everybody. So we need to find that.
So could we, could we add, could we add potential presentations to this list of meetings that we've done?
I mean.
Yes.
Good, but.
And then, I'll, I'll get that guy to come, uh, do a presentation of one of those, and then we'll have, we'll have some things to compare.
Yeah, I mean, we might as well make the best of the time being here, is utilizing this. But so, if we're going to do that, I want to, I will wait, I mean, of course, I'll have the agendas ready, but I will wait to post them until the actual time to post them. So if there's people, presentations we can schedule in, I don't wanna have to push them further, so we'll just wait.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I, I won't go ahead and post all the agendas right now, in case, so like, if you have a guy that wants to hop in on one of those dates, I can wait some minutes.
Can you post the meeting notice without the agenda?
I, I mean, I could put it on the calendar, yes, but it wouldn't hit the statutory requirements as far as.
Right, right, right. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, so that, so that people know that we're, that we're, that we're gonna get together and have, that, you know, this is what we're planning to do that, but we don't have all the appointments made yet. Um, you know, it's like, can I have a draft? Can I have a draft agenda? I don't know if you can do that or not, but I mean, you know.
I can at least post the, post the, the dates of the special session, and that gives enough notice for everybody to see kinda what's going on, um.
Can you put in discussion and or take action on, uh, healthcare presentations?
Yeah, well, maybe.
Put that, you put that in, and then we, we get to it, and if there's no presentations, we go fabled until the 1. Put that, you put that in and then we, we get to it. And if there's no presentations, we go fabled until one can be here. But at least it's on the agenda and we know what, we know what's coming.
It takes it off your plate too.
Right. Doesn't make you wait until, it doesn't make you sit and go, oh my gosh, this is coming up.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so since we are taking some kind of action out of that, not just tabling it, but some additional actions, I need a motion to lay that out.
I make a motion that we add to the previously mentioned list of meetings to discuss and or take action on health insurance presentations for the city employees.
You're tabling number five until the next meeting. Or number B, I'm sorry.
And, and, and we're tabling? Which one?
B. New business.
Six B.
Six B.
Okay, so the motion is to table six B.
Until the next meeting.
And then until the next meeting and we're gonna add to our special sessions to discuss and or take action on presentations for health benefits.
Yeah. Got your motion?
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
Judge Goby.
Framed Union.
Greg Sprinkle. David Sebber.
All right. You got everything that you need?
Yes.
Moving on, number seven, executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 Personnel Matters. Also under executive session B, discussion and or action to name assistant city administrator. Need a motion to go into executive session or just call the time at 7:01?
Any motion.
Motion we can go into executive session.
Got a motion at 7:01?
7:01.
I've got a motion in a second. Judge Goby.
Framed Union.
Greg Sprinkle. David Sebber.
It will be in executive session. We'll be back as quick as we can.
Alright, we're gonna call it back to order. It's, oh, we are live. Call it back to order at seven eighteen. Moving on to number eight. Resume special session, discussion and or action to create a position. City Administrator?
And I make a motion that we table that item until we have an administrator.
I've got a motion on the table. Um, I think we need to do them separately. I think you're just doing eight. So I got a motion. You're seconding?
Yes, I can.
Alright. Judge Goby. Alright. Motion passed. B, discussion and or action to name Assistant City Administrator.
I make a motion we table that until we have an administrator.
My seconded it. I got a motion in a second. Judge Goby.
Randy Madsen. Greg Sprinkle.
Yes, sir.
All pass. Okay. Moving on to there is number nine, moving into the workshop. Introduction and discussion on Council's Legacy Project. So I've had a little bit of discussion on this. This is something I'd like to put in place. I was on council for six years. And it just, we got little things done here and there, but there was never any of the really big things that I would like to have seen done. So in order to get council more involved, I would like to create what we're calling a legacy project. But I'd like to see each of you council members bring to this project two projects each. One, something that you believe is majorly needed for the city that you feel like we could accomplish getting done. And then a second one that, well, the first one would be that the city really needs and the second one be one that you would like to see accomplished. So it could be big or small, but I would just like you to make sure it's something that you feel like we can work as a team and tackle. As you can see, I've asked Mary to bring in a whiteboard. I'd like to see this project go up on that whiteboard and every one of our council meetings be able to do it updates on it. It'll allow us to work as a team on what each one of you want. And at the end of the year, be able to come back and know that you really accomplished something big for the city. Y'all have any thoughts on any of that?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
To talk about it on the whiteboard, do we have to have it as an agenda item? Can we just say, talk about stuff on the whiteboard?
So it would be on the agenda. It'll just be a running update?
Correct.
To update, to give updates?
If, if there are updates, so just leave it an update.
Okay. Long as, long as it's on the agenda and we, and we have.
So it'll be on every agenda to give us a chance to go in and update each meeting so we know where our problems lie, we know where we're delegating something, and we can move this project forward. We know that we're gonna need resources without, that's outside of here, but we're gonna have to think of a, as a team outside of the box on what we need. So what I'd like to do, whiteboard is here, I'd like to see each one of y'all before you leave, put on there what your two projects are. Basically split the board in, within four and you get a quarter section each.
We bring for place five.
What's it over to?
Yeah, we need, need to release five because if we appoint, we wanna bring them into it. Sorry, I wasn't thinking of that.
And have another spot on that. Could we not, yes, we could use the whiteboard physically, but we could then move this to a digital whiteboard where even they can have a workflow of some sort that they can update periodically when they're not, when we're not in session and just review what.
That'd be perfect if you throw it up on the screen, it is a digital.
A digital workflow.
You each have a workflow, we see where things are, we see where the red flags are, we see where help is needed. Because the thing is important, you're all new to it, but after experiencing it for six years, I think it's very important that the citizens get to see what y'all are working on, what y'all are trying to get accomplished, and then the achievement of it at the end of the day. Is there something to work towards except for just budgets and stuff like that?
Who wants to go first?
I would make one more suggestion though. So when we put something down there, you know, not any one of the individual councilmen probably can't do it by themselves, you know, you may have to have the help of others.
This, this is gonna be a total help. So you can talk to each other one on one. So if you're through the two weeks and you've got something that was assigned for you and Chad to work on, then y'all can communicate through that. But this is gonna be a team. This will have to pull in resources from the city. We'll probably end up pulling in resources from the engineering group, probably pulling resources from SRA, the county, there's no telling. It depends on the scope of y'all's project. I would, I would love to see y'all, one at a time, go write what your project is, or we can discuss it here for a minute and then you can do it. Maybe you got a marker?
A bunch of them.
A bunch of them. So I've tried mine out.
And I have more than two, Chris.
Can you email me a copy?
I would still like to see.
Yes, I can. Oh, well, maybe I can. So, because I'm gonna talk about them a little bit.
Yep.
Um, would you pass those down? Chair?
I would still like to see the highlighted ones of the project put up on the board. So picking, since you got multiple, I'd like to see two of them put up there.
So JD, will you write park project up there?
I'll do that one. It'll go digital.
Just write left hand.
He gets the, no. Shannon, is yours better?
What am I writing, park, park project?
But you need to write Greg.
Yeah, it needs to be me.
Your rest but Greg.
Greg or his seat number or?
However you wanna do it.
Greg.
Two G's on the end. Oh, thank you.
You didn't know.
Double, triple G. You can just write park project. Nice, brother. B R O J C.
Oh, he was asking park.
Oh. Okay, so here, this, this is my thought. I would like to revitalize the city park. And in that, I believe that some of this we can do in-house. Some of this we will need grant money for. Some of it we will need the money from the short-term rentals. Hotel occupancy tax money. And just some of the things that I was thinking would help revitalize it. We're changing to a weekly mowing, I believe it's not weekly right now. Not saying that it's not, I just don't believe it is. Weeding, bathroom maintenance and weed control, new lighting and electrical pavilions, new playground equipment, new basketball goals, pickleball court on the basketball court. Clear the brush on the land at the point. Clean and clear the open area at the boat dock. So clear brush on land at the point to me. There's this giant wooded section that backs up to the golf course. And it's basically useless, useless because it is nothing but brush. And if we cleared it out, put picnic tables in, it would be a shaded area. It would still be a buffer to the golf course, but still open up that point on the park. And then also clear up that and clean the open area by the boat dock and the parking area as well. And because most people park in the area where you would have picnic tables or where you would think you would. Improve the gate entrance area and the aesthetics of the entrance.
To the point?
To what?
To the point or?
To the park. So improve that gate entrance area with, it's, it's sixty years old.
Yeah.
Right? And it's, it's, you know, welded up nice from sixty years ago. It's not a really welcoming entrance to the park today. Soccer goals, picnic tables and bleachers, and then add cameras and lighting to improve the security and safety of the people that are at the park.
Very nice, so you're gonna pick that as your number one?
That's my, that's my number one in the, in the, in the, in the want section. And then I'm gonna add to something in a minute. And then as my number two, this is, this is big grand honey, and that is to widen Maze Lane. Widen and resurface, these are not as you might expect. It, you know, at least a third of our.
Yep, that's who's sweating, speaking as your number three, right?
Yep.
Driving back up on Maze Lane.
It doesn't back up, it's just that, but at least a third of the people that live in West Milwaukee drive on Maze Lane every day. And every time I drive on it, it's not wide enough for two cars without pushing over on the side. Yeah, you gotta hang a tire over the edge. It needs drainage, it needs to be widened, it needs to be, it needs to be a major thoroughfare, honestly. Because it gets a third of our residents driving on it every day. Going to a truck work, not even sure that a flashing yellow light there would be a bad idea or even a stoplight. Because it's a dangerous corner.
You what? But I was hoping you'd put that.
I don't care, I don't even know anybody that lives on Maze Lane. I'm just doing it because I, every time I drive it, well, of course you do. Just figured. Scratch the whole. But no, it is, it is the number one major, it's really the number one major street we have in the city. That and Rabbit Cove, other than two seventy-six.
Yeah.
And if we don't look at improving that road, we're gonna really struggle to find any type of commercial larger commercial business to go on that ten acres on the corner. Right? Because a truck, nobody's gonna wanna turn on and off of that two seventy-six. An eighteen wheeler's not gonna wanna turn off of two seventy-six onto, you know, into a commercial parking area there to be a distribution center or whatever, if there's not a light and they're gonna wanna come out on Maze Lane to be able to do. And we have to build a road there that will actually withstand them.
So what I would ask there, that you look at what our comp plan is already. I know that on streets, I believe Maze Lane is actually in phase one. So you may look at what they're planning there. And then go from there and I'd ask that if you could break it down kind of like you did here with what you're wanting to do and all the things that it will take to do that. I'll go ahead and add this to it. JD, John and I have been working with the county with a mutual aid agreement to get them to help us do a few things. They did agree this week to come in and bring in their recolorant machine. Side boom and all the trees that are coming out over the ditches and all that, they're gonna come cut all that back for us.
Awesome.
So I mean, it's part of your project, so if you go on there, it'll be a quick check off when they're done.
My, my challenge is, is I, I can, I can make a park because I know what goes into it. I can't build a road.
Correct.
So I, I, and I don't know everything that goes into it.
That's why we're here, we're, we're able to talk about a few things. We know that getting the trees trimmed back, the ditch is cleaned up, or, or some of the maintenance, it's gonna have to be part of it and then.
That's a start, but let's definitely.
Have an asset within the city to work through the other part of the plan to try to come up with a cost. And then once you do that, then we go back and start looking at how we come up with that money.
And then the, my third thing is, and this kinda goes along with not those two things, but there, there are things that I believe have been not well maintained in the past. And I want this council to get them caught up. And that is the audits and the past agendas, the stuff, the audits, most importantly to me are the audits because we we're not, you know, one of the things that I've learned, kind of listening to a lot of the people and, and working through some of the grant stuff is that without up-to-date audits, without a planning grant, without a comprehensive plan, the likelihood of you getting the grant money to do the things you wanna do doesn't happen. So we need these things to fall into place so that the other things will fall into place for us. So getting, if we need to put resources towards the audit, well, these are things that are not necessarily a project or a, you know, a legacy type, you know, something you can say, hey, I helped do that or I got that done. These are things that as a city, we have to not only focus on, but we have to set executable plans to get them done. And I don't know how we do that.
Do you want that on there or do you want it on our bi-weekly special session workshop where we just continue to work at it?
I want it wherever it will get it done.
So I, I would recommend that that's just something that continues to get put on the agenda. We spend some time with Mary to figure out where we're at, what needs to be done. Again, you can have three projects, but
Well, yeah, no, we, you know, so in my mind, this is, this is kind of, since this is the first workshop, this is, let's throw our ideas up there, let's put priority on the things that all of us agree on. And because as you said, it's, it's gonna take a team to do it. Well, if, if, if I'm overworking on my two or three and James is working on his two or three and Randy's working on his two or three, none of us get as far as if all three of us are working on one or two. Right? So I'm throwing stuff up there to see what sticks and what is important. These are the things that I think are important to the city. Everybody may not agree with me and that's perfectly okay. You don't have to like what I'm putting up there. You can say, you can say, hey, look, I, or you may, somebody else may have something that is more important or raises more eyebrows or has more, has a, a better result for the city. And I'm perfectly fine with saying, hey, look, that takes precedence over both of my things. And I don't have a problem with that happening. And that's the way I want, that's the way I wanna convey my list of stuff because I have one more.
Actually makes a lot of sense, I mean, if we can put all of these different ideas in there and then we prioritize.
That's, if that's how y'all choose to do it, if you got his four and you only have one and you got two and you got five, if you wanna put them all.
Somebody else is gonna put something up there that I think is better than any one of the ones I put up or more important, right? Or, or some of us, your groups are gonna say the same thing. Yes, very, very possible. And the last thing, and this actually goes, and I know we couldn't talk about it at the opening opening, what do they call? Citizens input? On my list, it says social media presence. And it is, I believe that this city has a small and mostly negative social media presence. And we need to find a way to change the narrative to positive. I don't know how we do it, I'm not an influencer, I'm not a social media person. I don't do Instagram, I don't do Facebook unless I'm buying something on Marketplace. So but we need to change the narrative from negative to positive and have a better social media presence for our events, our announcements and our interactions with the city. And I think that goes along very well with what Cecilia said earlier, is that people don't know what we might be wanting them to come help do or volunteer for. And the two or three webpages that we have that the city produces or that the Chief West to walk in a beautiful has out, you know, some of those websites, we need more than that and we need more. It's, what I've learned, it's called engagement. And we need to engage the public to interact with us in social media, in person, and we need to do it in positive ways. This is a great idea to do that. Right? Not saying that park or any one of my ideas, I'm saying doing this is a great way for us to do that.
Well, that's actually what I'm hoping. I'm hoping that we'll get citizens' input back on some of this stuff.
I agree a hundred percent, but it's, it's very difficult for somebody to come spend Thursday evening with us for two hours. It's real fast for somebody to throw something on, on Twitter or whatever, on Instagram and say, wow, I drove by such and such today and they trimmed the bushes back, they painted the rail, they patched the puddle, something like that that is, that's, that's a, that's positive feedback. And we need to change the narrative in this city. And it's our responsibility to provide the things and the platforms for people to change that narrative.
You know, that, that particular thing, I think it's something that city.
You wrote that one up there, social, social media presence?
There's a city administrative function.
Absolutely. Okay. Who's next?
I'll, I'll do it.
First, first for me, big, big wish list project is in Maze Lane. I, I agree with that. That's something that when James and I were knocking doors, that's all we heard about. Street, street, street. And that's one that's really busy and that's a, that's a high-impact thing. And, and it's on the, it's on our comp plan. So that one, I think, is, is number one. And I think, I think the process is that we get a planning grant to get it laid out, get it engineered. And that puts us high on the list for, for further funding to actually do the project.
You can wrap Maze Lane again up there on his.
Or you can put a stick man beside Greg. Good old check mark.
Yep. So the like, for this one right there, what I'd like to see possibly is if you two came together with a list of the things that you can think of that are gonna need to take place.
Okay.
And, and then we can get them up there and then, like I said, engineer is probably gonna be one of the top ones. What's already being done for our phase one? And, and, and go from there.
Correct.
Alright, sorry about that.
Number two, I want radio read water.
Ben, maybe you just smiled.
That, that should, with that, with that one investment, that should free one man year. And then one man year, go work for Greg Park. Exactly what my thought was. So we did the, I did the math and I would like, I, I would love to be able to take that one man year and have that be a full-time park person. And it doesn't change the city's budget. It does give us presence in the park and they have dedicated actual obligations to perform these activities. And I would say we create. And I would say we create a park supervisor role and see if we can find some money out of the, uh, hotel tax to give that person a raise, to have not necessarily a director's pay, but a, a supervisor's pay. And I would like to see us do that with a current employee, somebody that we feel like has, you know, done a great job in the city already, and I, I really, I really want us to see how well we can get our employees behind what we're doing and want to do more, and change that narrative that they hear from negative to positive, and the narrative that they speak from either nothing to positive. I've never heard anybody say negative things out of the, out of the city, you know, out of city employees, right? But, but I don't want them to start, and I want them to start, I, I want, what I really want is I want the best employees from Lone Oak, Emery, Quinlan, and everywhere else to wanna work in the city of Westerwaukees. I want them to all be begging to have a job here, and I want everyone here to say, sorry, I'm not leaving. All right, so, I got two more.
Hey.
The health insurance.
Hey.
That, that's a big deal. It was on my list. Health insurance. Uh, and I've got, I've gotta look, I've, I've already got some things in process for, for both of them. I've got someone who, uh, texted me just a minute ago about the health. Um, I'll, I'll get us, I'll get us a presentation. And I've got, I've got, I've got somebody talking to me too. And I've got, I've also, I also have been talking to Ferguson Waterworks about, it was Radio Read. They have done a financial analysis for it. And they, uh, I, I gave them a list, that JD provided for me, of the, uh, the meter addresses. And they'll give us a, um, a transition plan.
Hey.
Which, you know, order in which they suggest that the meters be replaced. Um, and they'll, they are brawling at the mouse to come out here and make a, make, make a presentation, so. So, one thing I think you're, that we haven't mentioned in, in your water meter proposal, is we've talked about how it gets us this one man year, and that we could use that as a, you know, park ranger. What we forget there is that, you know, the, the conference in plan told us that we were losing twenty-seven percent of our water to unbilled, unused, unaccounted-for water. The new water meters also catch us, catch us twenty-seven, twenty-seven percent of the, of the lost water revenue, or lost water. And that's, that's part of their financial, uh, analysis that they did. Sure, but I think it's important we bring it up, and, because it's gonna add, it's gonna add credibility to what you're asking. It will, it will, because, yeah, we, we lose, I forget the exact number, but it's, it's twenty-five percent plus or minus. Yeah, I think I just remember it's twenty-seven percent being the number that they gave us, but, but that's huge. Yeah.
Hey.
Um. And the short-term rentals, uh.
Hey.
Uh, regulation, or a management or system, or whatever you wanna call it, it's, it's, a, as we see this, a, as I see what Shannon is doing, it's, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work. Uh, and she has, uh, has located, um, a vendor who has a system that goes out and scrapes data. So they could keep us a, a living list of short-term rentals that are here. Um, they also have, uh, a process of registering those short-term rentals with, was it with the county chain?
It was just, um, correlating the information from like CAD, makes sure the rest of property owner information, if I understood it correctly.
Right, but there was, there was, uh, something about the reporting of their, their revenue tax to, uh.
Oh, yes, well, that's with, uh, I come in ZK, well, that's just control, yeah.
Right, okay, and then with the council, we'll go to it. Because in the, in the first look at it, if you look on VRVO, every one of them says Quinlan. And they're, they're clearly in our map, and so, that, uh, we can make, we can make a difference in this. They have a system that can automate much, if not all of it, depending on cost. And I, I'd like, I wanna get someone in here to talk about that. Because I think we can get them, I think we can do two things with that. We can get, we can get additional revenue, and we can, we can take some of this work off of Shannon, so she can pay more attention to her neighborhood responsibility. All right, I can come up with more, but that's enough.
Chad?
Yes. Um, mine would be, I'm gonna go on record tonight with what choosing, as my legacy project for this term, Arrowhead. Water out there is brown, does not remember that's reality. People are living with discolored water coming out of their taps. That is a basic quality of life and health concern for that neighborhood. Recrued with the Gulf Force line extension that when this city decides to move, we can move fast. JD got that project done in a week after people said it couldn't be done. Arrowhead deserves the same level of urgency and respect. Arrowhead HOA supported me when I ran, and I told them I would fight to get this fixed. I intend to keep that promise. I'm asking two things now. First, that we place an item on the next agenda or a dedicated workshop to just put before Arrowhead. Uh, engineering options, funding, grants, and a realistic timeline. Second, that we make Arrowhead Water the number one priority on our infrastructure list until it's solved. Needs to be at the top of everyone's list, not something that keeps getting pushed to the bottom. It's time we stop just acknowledging the problem and start organizing this as a top project to get done. That's my first one.
Arrowhead.
Uh, the second one would be lower the speed limit out here, two seventy-six, with the light Maze Lane, maybe another light on the park somewhere.
Speed limit on two seventy-six, red light Maze Lane, and possible second location.
Been several people that have died out there, just since I've been here, at the top of the chief level, and a lot of people have died out there.
Speed limit what? Lower the speed limit, have a red light put in at Maze Lane, and possibly a second red light in town.
At least lighting out there, for sure.
That's different.
Crosswalk.
Different, yeah. So, you add lighting to that, down to seventy-six?
We can make that separate from the speed limit.
Two seventy-six and Maze Lane, right? Know what you're saying?
Uh, you're looking at lowering the speed limit on Maze Lane and adding street lighting.
Lowering the speed limit on two seventy-six.
I'm sorry. On two seventy-six and adding street lighting.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, along with red lights.
Yeah.
Hey. Good?
Yeah.
I'm Lee, I got it.
I'm Lee, he said.
As, you know, Ramsey said, you know, when we went, what we were, was, you know, streets. So, my two projects are related to streets. One, find a way to connect two seventy-six to Banner Edition.
Same Banner Edition or, or two seventy-six to Rabbit Cove, just.
No, no, either way.
A, a connecting, yeah, a connecting road from two seventy-six to Rabbit Cove.
Yeah, very.
Huh?
Both very.
Second one is street lights throughout the city, you know, on the main streets, such as Main Street and the Thomasville.
You got a second one for street lights, but you're willing to do more than two seventy-six.
I was gonna say. But, what was it, major roads?
Major roads, that's probably a good way to put it.
I think you know, I think you'd have to prioritize these, you know, just.
Prioritizing's the wrong word. I don't wanna use that. I wanna see us every two weeks coming up with plans, problems, solutions to each one of these. I don't care if it's just something small. At each one of our council meeting prior, we should be sending Mary an update for her to update her, what was it you called it?
Workflow.
Workflow. We should be able to see issues, progress, roadblocks, whatever the case may be. If we're giving her those every two weeks, we're discussing it in here, we're finding new problems, we're coming up with solutions. There should never be a week that go, a, a council meeting that goes by that we don't hit on each one of those with the progress or the problem, and come up with a solution to the problem. Does that make sense? Everybody agree with that?
Since this is the workshop, can I ask this question?
Yes, ma'am.
Streetlights? Okay, because I know in neighborhoods, if you wanna a street light added, that person adds it pays for it on a monthly basis. So, I'm just not wondering about, uh, I am wondering about the nature, right?
It, it may be, until we dig down into it. It may be that the city's responsible for it, we don't know. But until we actually dig down into it and figure it out, and that's what the purpose of this is, is to be able to dig down.
So, I did dig down into it a little bit for Indian Oak. I drove through the neighborhood, and I looked to see how many lights were there in the daytime, and I, and I wrote, laid a list of where they were. Then I came back at night to see if they were working. Lights are there, not working. And so, I called, um, Farmer, Farmer, and she said, the lady was really nice, she said, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll fix those. Give us, give me the, their numbers on the pole. I said, well, I just happen to have them. And I gave her the numbers on the pole, and that was probably a year ago, and not a single one of those lights has been fixed. Did they say they fixed them, and not a single one?
They charged the time on.
So, I know, like, I have farmers, and it's East Waukegan, but we have two in my yard. One is on the street, one is in the back. We pay a fee for each one of those. The neighbor, they didn't want it anymore. They said, take it off my bill. It does not come on.
Well, now, these are, these are on the street.
These are two, yeah. These are two.
Any of the ones that you see on these businesses, it's all.
Yes, they're tied into their electric bill.
Is that one that's on the corner, Indian Oak, uh, short water line and shoreline, that's by the park? By the boat ramp, that one, that bill comes to the HOA. We get, we, we do get an electric bill. It includes that light pole and, uh, stuff up front, I think at the entrance. Yeah, the sprinkler.
I had some contacts with that DC.
There you go. And I know there's a way to do it, because a previous mayor, Alan Schumake, got some lights put up on Maze Lane. So, it's just a matter of digging in and figuring it out. I encourage you all to use each other's resource to the point that you can without going outside of and violating your Open Meetings Act. Um, sorry, Mary, but I'm advising them to use Mary to make sure that information's getting out.
Probably talk to you.
Yep, yep. Um, here is a resource, anything I can do to help. But this gives us something that we push forward through, throughout the whole year, and start getting some of this done. It does start with kind of breaking them down and figuring out what exactly is needed. So, that's what I ask you to take back to before the next meeting, is to start kind of breaking them down, kinda like you did Greg with your number one. And you're not gonna think of everything. Things are gonna get thought of and added to it as we move on through the year. Well, we can't do this until we do this, so that gets added, but we don't know until we start. So, I ask you to take it back, kind of break your, your, your plan down with what you can think of that it needs, and then we go from there.
So, something you guys are gonna find beneficial on our next agenda is we are going to present the possibility of a grant the city is going out for that will only be for certain areas in the city. It is a downtown grant. It will cover parks, it will cover street lighting on two seventy-six, it can cover some infrastructure on, in the area that's downtown.
I was hoping that I was gonna hear City Hall somewhere, but it didn't come up.
City Hall is in the downtown area in our future zoning. Now, mind you, this is in zoning that we will be looking at adopting on the sixteenth of December. So, that downtown district is established in the new zoning, okay? This grant will cover that area. It is very specific in what you can use it for. Anything residential, it cannot be used for, and it cannot be used to build buildings. That was the question we already asked. So, but it is a significant grant.
City Hall was on my mind, and I thought about that as well, and I still think there's ways that we can take some of the city's assets and turn those into a city hall. I, I don't, you know.
Making it to you Friday.
Yeah.
And it can, this, as long as we get the ball rolling, yeah. I, I'll be honest, I was hoping that was one that I would hear, some kind of downtown City Hall or something.
So, what's on your list?
I'm actually not gonna do one, because, uh, my goal is to get your, get y'all's things done.
All right.
Y'all pretty much hit everything I was wanting to hear, other than the City Hall, city downtown, whatever you wanna call it.
But that's already works, so that's.
James has asked to add to his, a City Hall.
Yeah. A break? No, no, City Hall, City Hall.
A City Hall.
What are the wish lists?
That's not a wish list. This is something we're gonna work on. What will it take?
Yeah, what is?
If it's on this board.
Don't you wish to put that under all?
They're all gonna be under all. Um, but that's what we gotta figure out, is what's it gonna take? One, you're gonna have to figure out where it would go. What's it gonna cost? How are we gonna find the money?
Where can we get the money?
Yes. So, it's, it gives us, it gives us a chance to actually work on it, and that's all I ask, is that you bring some kind of update to every meeting for your list.
So, school me a little bit here. I did some reading today, um, on, um, open meetings. And from what I understand, and I wanna make sure that I'm not misunderstanding, we can talk to each other. We just can't solicit support for certain items or votes. But we can talk about this amongst ourselves.
I would ask to get a hundred percent clarification.
I would, I would like to get that clarification, because that's, if we can do that, then that's, then that's gonna help our team work a lot.
Please have Lee give the CBT spell out as much as she can.
That's, it's very great. I can have her give you something and pull it all out, where it's all very confident. But you can't.
We can trade.
The rule of thumb is two, the two, like, two talks to two, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, that's always been the rule of thumb with even previous attorneys. Uh, and then once you create more, of course, we always have a possible forum, so if we're all at our Christmas lunch in a moment, we're not speaking on things and taking action, talking about what votes you're gonna be doing, that's what they, you're trying to avoid doing.
So, my understanding, now, let me give you an example. Um, my understanding, so I wanna get Wi-Fi at the park. That's part of my project, I already got Wi-Fi, but I wanna get Wi-Fi at the park, okay? I talked to Ramsey, and Ramsey and I talked about, hey, we, we, you know, we're driving around the golf cart, and we go around, and we look at it and everything, and uh, I drop Ramsey off, and I go, you know what? Chad knows a lot about Wi-Fi. Hey, Chad, can I do this, this, and this with Wi-Fi in the park? That's three of us having a conversation that my understanding is, is not legal.
Correct. That's my understanding of it.
And my understanding is that is legal. Well, I like your understanding better.
Let's get Legos input on it.
We can create a forum online that's off the city website, as long as the citizens have access to do it, that we can talk, all talk back to each other.
So, like, if we had a slide, if we had a slide.
We have something on there, we can.
Already have social media that that could fall under.
Yes.
That somebody could figure out how to work with what we have with our website and how to create that. You already have the open door to that right there.
Who are, who has a high school or college-age kid that wants to be an influencer? Somebody in our city is a college student that is studying to be, uh, uh, influencer, or online presence, or whatever. They're gonna do something in digital transformation. That's who we need to apprentice. We've got somebody in the neighborhood. Do we? Yeah. Okay.
Again?
Autumn wood. Okay, we'll get, okay, yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not doing it.
Not doing it.
You spin.
I had one that I didn't hear y'all talk about, which I, I, is y'all adding staff. And I saw y'all saying we had no, no office for these people that were gonna be hiring, so that might be one you wanna throw away.
City Hall.
City Hall.
Well, I know, but that, they're gonna get hired. Well, I know, but that, they're gonna get hired before City Hall's built.
I think that that's something that we can come together, there's already been some looks at some different buildings.
We, we, we've already struggled through that one.
I like to add one to mine if I can.
Sure.
A post office.
That would solve all these.
Yeah.
How do you, how do, how do you go about getting a post?
I'm not sure. Somebody's gonna have to get a, a postmaster and figure out.
We're gonna set him up in trailer, here's the, at the camp place over there.
I'd like to see if we have enough kids to walk from the school often. Because Quinlan is overrun.
So what is, what, I didn't hear what you said?
Adding an elementary school.
Adding an elementary school.
School or something out here. Quinlan's overrun, we know that, since they have issues, they, I mean, buses are even an issue. How many, how many kids did we have in West Wapahnee that go to Quinlan or would it double?
More than Quinlan does.
It's a great point, that's a great question.
So I would kinda like to see that. The post office would be a big thing for me.
Well, you get, find somebody to give them the land first, because they never buy the land.
Yeah.
That's, that's your big challenge, is find, you gotta find somebody willing to donate the land to them for a school, because they never buy the land. Put it at the point, yeah.
Does somebody wanna add that to theirs?
Yeah, I'll add that to mine, I'd love to see an elementary school out here. Because then we can make a school zone down at, down 276. It'll be 20 miles an hour all day.
They'll start somewhere. I don't know. We had kindergarten procedure in one building and now there's about, what, five buildings? I think. Four buildings?
What?
What is ranked at? One, two, three, four. And they started out literally when I was in kindergarten. Kindergarten routine here was the one building. Center block. Barely moved.
Uh, intermediate and high school.
But the great thing about it, you get a school, is you also get, you also get a park and a playground and a.
Yeah, you get a portion of the tax.
Yeah, so that's huge, that, that's a great idea, Shannon.
Okay, so we got our list. Like again, again, I ask that you take your items and break them down to the best that you can. We will be adding, and please give Mary enough time to be able to create it so that we can move this to a digital. Come prepared with some kind of task that we can move on through the next two weeks with.
And so how are we gonna review these things? Are we gonna have like a little workshop session at the end of each meeting?
Each meeting is gonna be on the agenda to touch the legacy project. Discussions and our actions revolving. Yep, discussions and our actions revolving, revolving around the legacy project. So that we can come through, discuss and take action as needed.
And Chris, if I, if my understanding is correct, then it may be that, that there may not be an update on all 16 of them up there.
There may not be.
There may be an update on four of them during that one agenda item.
I just asked that we don't allow anything to go stagnant. You know, I would ask that we don't allow it to go past two meetings without some kind of update. You've only got, if we're trying to take this through next November, you know, we wanna see some progress. We need to figure out obstacles, because it may be that it goes to engineering and engineering may take a couple of months to get what we need. Hopefully not. Well, we oughta touch, this one's still waiting on engineering. This one's waiting on SRA.
We may get to a point where we say, hey, look, this is not feasible and this, you know, for now. Jen, I'd like to know more about the water thing. At Arrowhead, I just wanna learn, you know, how much of it is on the city side and how much of it is on the resident side, right? Because like at my house, I had to have a lot of, some of the pipes replaced. Because, and it was, that was the cause of the, it wasn't on the city's side, it was on my side in the house. So.
I can touch on that. Arrowhead is fully city, but cast iron.
Oh, so it's all, all, all of the problems are caused by the city's water side? Okay, okay.
So I would imagine that one's gonna end up being, A, you're gonna have to figure out the price, probably gonna have to break it down and do a certain portion of it, whether it's monthly, bi-monthly. It may be a long drawn out process, but we should be making steps forward, whether it's hopefully once a month, so many feet or whatever something, so that we're making progress on.
We're laying down 20 feet a month, but that's, I don't know how many feet it is.
Well, it's so, it's so old, so it's very poor.
That's all.
Couldn't you wear some of that 27% of the water going?
26 of the 27?
Bring my shoulders.
Yeah. Well, but you see how that all ties together? I mean, you know, if we do the water meters and we save the, and we, and we, and we save that money and we improve that, cast iron being porous and losing the water there.
Water meters at the same time.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but, but you know what I'm saying is that you, you actually have this. Yeah, you have this, you know, you have these two or three things that are tied together that all feed into another project, right? And that, that's what really, that's how you get something meaningful accomplished, is by tying them all together and, and having people focus on different portions.
Okay, are we good? So we wrote it as introduction and discussion, there's no motion needed tonight. As we move forward on every agenda, it will have a motion, allow us to discuss and/or perhaps possibly take action so that we can continue moving on with it. If there's no other discussion on that tonight, then we can move on. We've already done number 10, so number 11 would be adjournment.
I make a motion.
Got a motion on the table?
Craig Sprinkle. Thank you. Did you get, pick a second?
This is the first time, man.
I hope.